The 1,151st regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary platts and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petition will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to the City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and the professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If the Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
President.
Mrs. McHugh.
Here.
Mr. Bonjero.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Karen Magna is here. Chairman Wolschow.
Is here, and also with us we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. Again, I just want to remind folks in the audience, with each of these petitions, we'll start with the Planning Department giving background information. We'll then ask the petitioner to come forward and speak through the item, and then there'll be an opportunity for anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak for or against the item to also come forward. So with that, if the Secretary is ready, we'll begin with item number one on our agenda.
Petition 2019-10-02-15 submitted by Tissio Architects, Inc., on behalf of Citizens Bank, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 10.03i of the City of Livonia Zoning Ordinance Number 543 as amended, to construct and operate a freestanding drive-up ATM kiosk within the parking lot of the shopping center at 19043 to 19053 Middlebelt Road, located on the west side of Middlebelt between Clarita and Seven Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 11.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, this is a request to construct and operate a freestanding drive-up ATM kiosk within the parking lot of the Mid-Seven Shopping Plaza, which is located on the west side of Middlebelt Road, just south of Seven Mile. This property altogether is about 5.36 acres. The shopping center itself contains roughly 56,700 square feet of retail floor space. Customer parking, as you can see from this aerial photograph, is mostly located between the storefronts and Middlebelt Road. Main tenants within the plaza include Pet Supplies Plus, which is located at the north end, and then Planet Fitness, located near the center. Drive-up ATM kiosks, or this particular drive-up ATM kiosk would be located at the south end of the property. Going back to the zoning map, Mid-Seven Plaza currently is divided into three different zoning classifications: C1, which is the city's local business district; C2, which is general business; and then P, which is parking. An application is pending that would change the zoning of the southerly 65 feet of the parking lot, which is zoned parking, to the C1 classification in anticipation of constructing this freestanding drive-up ATM. The City Council gave first reading on the rezoning on October 2nd. Second reading and roll call are on hold pending a review of the site plan. Pursuant to Section 10.03L of the ordinance, drive-up windows do require waiver use approval. Citizens Bank would lease the premises where the ATM kiosk is proposed, thus it is not or it would not be located on a separate parcel, nor would it have separate access to either Middlebelt or Seven Mile Road. Instead, access to the kiosk would be provided by means of the existing drive aisles and approaches within the shopping center. The ATM kiosk would occupy an area that measures roughly 20 feet by 90 feet, again on the south side of the property, next to an existing parking lot drive aisle that runs east and west from Middlebelt Road to the back of the shopping complex. The area needed for the kiosk would displace nine parking spaces. Mid-Seven requires no fewer than 302 parking spaces to meet the ordinance, and even with the loss of these nine parking spaces, they would comply with the minimum parking requirement as 307 spaces would be, would remain available. The required setback for any structures within the C1 district is 75 feet. In this case, the kiosk itself, which is considered a structure, would be set back roughly 175 feet from Middlebelt Road. The kiosk would be located on a curbed island that measures approximately 30 feet in length by eight feet in width. The overall dimensions of the kiosk, including the canopy, would be 12 feet in height by nine feet in width and eight feet in depth. The canopy would partially overhang the driver's side of the drive-up lane. Customers would enter the one-way drive-up lane from the west and then exit to the east towards Middlebelt. The kiosk includes lights, as well as a clearance bar intended to protect the canopy. Drive-up services are required to have enough waiting or stacking space equal to no fewer than four car lengths in addition to the space at the drive-up window. The plan shows protected stacking for three vehicles, including the one at the kiosk. Service lanes for the drive-up windows are required to be at least 12 feet in width, and a proposed drive-up lane, in this case, would be 12 feet wide, thus it would comply. There is no bypass lane required in this case. As you can see from these illustrations, the four sides of the canopy would contain sign panels that identify Citizens Bank. No dimensions are provided, however, only one sign is allowed, thus the signage will require a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Lastly, the ordinance, as it pertains to this type of use, requires that drive-up facilities not be used for any purpose except a principal business use of the site. In this case, the principal use of the site is not banking, but instead general retail, thus approval to deviate from the stipulation will require City Council approval by means of a two-thirds majority vote.
On that, Mr. Chairman, if you give me a second, I will read out correspondence. Certainly. I apologize for not having it ready. First item is from the Office of the Treasurer, and it's dated October 31st. They indicate that they have reviewed the address in connection with the proposed petition, and at this time there are no outstanding amounts receivable for taxes, and therefore have no objections to the proposal. That letter is signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. Next is a similar letter from the Department of Finance, indicating that there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general or water and sewer, and therefore have no objections to the proposal. That letter is signed by Connie Kunkula, Chief Accountant, and that's dated October 22nd. And that is the extended correspondence. Okay, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our Planning Department? Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll wait for Mark to...
No, I apologize, there are a few...
It's okay. That's okay. A couple more letters there. Mr. Toramina, a couple things. One, I noticed in looking at the resolution, I think there's some typos in it. This is for the Mid-Seven Shopping Center, correct, what we're considering tonight?
That's correct, and you're right. I noticed that right on the top, it does say Mary Five.
Yeah, and both the approving and denying resolutions, we have, and we, this Commission, I'm trying, I'm not sure I remember the timing of it, or if I was a member of the Commission at the time, but was a similar kiosk considered by this Commission, and then at Mary Five or at a different...
Yes, so information regarding a previous petition similar to this one was provided in the staff report. It was in 2016 that Bank of America requested to construct a similar type of structure at the Mary Five Plaza, located on Five Mile Road and Five Mile, or Merriman and Five Mile.
Right.
And that petition was denied, and I think we provided the reasons.
And they did not appeal that ruling to the...
That is correct.
To the City Council, which would have been their right. Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
And, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but there were a couple more items of correspondence.
Yes, Mr. Toramina, go ahead.
Yes, one from our Inspection Department dated November 15th, indicating that they have no objections to the petition, and that's signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. A similar letter of no objection dated October 24th coming from the Division of Police, and signed by Brian Lee, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. A letter, again, of no objection from the Livonia Fire and Rescue Division, signed by Greg Marshall, Fire Marshal, and dated October 23rd. And lastly, we have a letter from the Engineering Division dated October 23rd that reads, "The existing parcel is currently serviced by public water main, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer. The information submitted does not show proposed alterations for the utility services, so it does not appear that there will be any impacts to existing systems. It should be noted that should the developer need to do any work within the Middlebelt Road, right-of-way permits will need to be obtained from the Wayne County Department of Public Services," and that letter signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Toramina. Is there, again, any additional questions for our Planning Staff? Seeing none, our petitioner is here, Mr. Tissio. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. As before, we are here seeking approval for the drive-up ATM. This is a result of the branch bank that has now closed that's on Middlebelt North of Seven Mile, about a quarter mile north. And they want to maintain and capture those same customers. Yes, sir.
Mr. Tissio, can we just get your address for our record?
I'm sorry, 19815 Farmington Road.
Great, thank you.
I know better than that. And we're...
You've done this a couple times.
Yes, a couple. We're also seeking the variance for one parking spot, as discussed at the study session, that the bank did a study of their drive-up ATMs and found that they have never had four in a queue. Rarely do they have three, and that's the matter of monitoring their transaction times, so they know when the cars come and leaving. And the only other thing to add is I submitted a letter to the Planning Commission asking if this gets approved for a seven-day variance for the waiver.
We did receive that, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions for our petitioner? Mrs. Smiley.
Good evening. Mine are about security on the site. I assume there's cameras on the kiosk, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Are they monitored in real time, or are they just recording?
I'll ask Mr. Paul Gagel, he's the Project Manager for Citizens, to address that.
Good evening, Paul Gagel, Citizens Bank, 27777 Franklin Road, Southfield. With regards to the cameras, we actually have a camera inside the ATM. There are no cameras outside of the ATM, so anything that it's, who's ever using the ATM is captured, their image is captured.
Okay, is that in real time? Would that, are you recording those and then check them later, or somebody doing that?
Our system is monitored electronically, and as soon as you put your card in the cap, the image is captured and sent to our monitoring center back in Rhode Island.
Good, thank you. And what kind of lighting do you have there?
This kiosk has downlighting, as well as the illuminated sign, but it also has downlighting to provide security, which is pretty, I don't know the exact lumens, but it is pretty bright. It lights up the area very well, so it's secure for the customers. Plus, we have additional site lighting. It's already existing in the parking lot in that area.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Ventura.
Just a clarification, sir, on the camera. So to be clear, the camera's only recording the person that's using the ATM. There's no surveillance of the area around the ATM.
Well, it's a direct shot, so anything that comes in front of the ATM, it's, it records continuously, much like you see on TV when they show something on a news, that something captured by a camera. It is monitored, but the thing is, the bank monitors the transactions of the ATM. Now, in a police situation, if video or something was needed, we certainly would work with the police to help if our cameras would capture anything. But it's not an overall, it's restricted to a certain area. And I would actually have to get a little more detail on that to make a clearer definition of that.
Okay, and I don't want to get into the weeds on that with you either, since you're not prepared to discuss it. So my other question would be, if there were someone in distress at the ATM, someone off-camera pointing a gun at them, is there a panic button or any kind of an emergency signal that could be, that is activated that would notify somebody in real time?
I will have to check that out. I don't know, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner? Mr. Karen Magna?
Mr. Chairman, you'd mentioned that there is a, there's a lease on this, on this piece of land for this, for this kiosk and the driveway there. How many-year lease is this?
We're starting off with a five-year lease with renewable options.
Okay, and it seems to be a way of the future, I don't know, but proposing this doesn't work out for you, you have something in your lease with the landholder that requires you to move this, this, this piece of building you've got here?
Yeah, that, that actually goes more towards our leasing team, but I'm sure we have clauses in there that we would, you know, be able to get out of the lease and provide renumeration to the landlord for some reason. I don't know the particular details of the lease as per that clause.
If I may, I believe I remember reading the lease, and it had that should they vacate the property, they have to restore it to its original condition.
Okay. And so five-year lease, and if it doesn't work out, you put it back to what it was, parking lot. The other thing I had is, and the overhang, the canopy over the, over the kiosk machine, it hangs over a little bit, I'm assuming so rain doesn't fall on you as you're sticking your arm out of the car.
That's, that's correct.
Is there an overhead clearance sign on that?
Yes, it's 12 feet.
It's 12 feet?
It's 12 feet from the curb, another six inches, so it's 12 six.
12 six, and that's posted right on, I didn't see it on the pictures, but it's posted right on there? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As mentioned earlier, a similar proposal was brought up in 2016 by Bank of America and was, was not approved by this Commission, but, you know, that was three years ago. Can you talk a little about the changing industry? I mean, you're closing branches, why, you know, why are we just doing ATMs and not branches here?
Well, those decisions are strategy decisions that are made at a much higher pay grade than mine. So I really don't know what all the driving factors are for them to make a decision in a, in a market area. I do know that we, throughout our entire footprint, from here to Michigan to the East Coast, we've had these situations come up, and there's certain guidelines that they follow. As I said, I'm not sure what they all are, but it's something that we're going through right now, a program we're doing right now, so.
Can you speak to, off the top of your head, or do you know how many of these you have in the metro area, or these standalone kiosks?
Um, yes. Yeah, they have, they have 300 in their full portfolio. I have to check my records, but I think there's about a dozen or so in Michigan, if not more.
Thank you.
Yeah. Last year, we opened up, recently, we opened up a couple, one at Nine Mile and Coolidge in Oak Park, and in Taylor at Goddard and Allen Road. We have remote kiosks that we've opened up, so recent projects that I've worked on.
And my last question, at least I think it's my last question, is at the study session, we were given the crime statistics for, for these type of things, or lack thereof. Could you, for the record, please share those?
Yeah, they're, again, citizens went back to their records, and of their 300 remote ATMs, they've never had a robbery, they've had the skimming issues, and they'd only happened twice in their 300 portfolio of just strictly standalone ATMs, nothing with a, connected to the branch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner? Miss, I have Miss McHugh, and then we'll go with Mrs. Smiley.
I know we stated that that branch, Middlebelt North of Seven Mile, is closing, correct?
It's closed.
It's closed, okay. That happened quick.
October 16th.
Anyways, the letter that is included in our packet gives some statistics as to the number of transactions that go on. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but when it talks about the current branch at that Middlebelt and Seven Mile, it had 48,000 transactions at their walk-up ATM in the last 12 months.
That's correct.
So 4,000 a month.
That's correct.
So I guess if you can just talk a little bit more about need and why they might put that there versus somewhere else in relationship to closing the branch.
From what I understand, that branch is a leased property as well.
That's correct.
So their lease is up, they'll be moving, and I'm assuming that the landlord's not interested, only leasing for an ATM. So they had to find a different location to continue to capture the customers that frequented that branch. If you move a mile or two away, you tend to lose exponentially more and more customers that you've captured through the years. So they've been looking at a location that's close enough to that branch, where they could locate a landlord and put in a, put in a new drive-up ATM.
Okay, thank you. And then, it is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but the other branch on Middlebelt is that also closing, or is that...
There's no bran, other branch on Middlebelt, there's one on Five Mile Road.
So that's the next closest?
That's the next closest one.
Okay.
And that's east of Farmington Road, and that is staying.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Plus, we also have a branch at Six Mile and Newburgh as well.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. McHugh. Mrs. Smiley?
Well, I'm going back to security. That skimming thing, so that's when somebody puts something in your ATM so that they can read your card, is that what skimming is?
Correct, and our security team does make sure they put anti-skimming devices on it, and they monitor it, and the machine is serviced by a third party, and all that is checked each time they go out to either load cash or service the machine.
And then my last question is, how many times in a week would you load and unload money, you know, like to pick up the deposits and put new money in there for withdrawals? Do you know?
No, I don't. Each, each machine is different, and it depends how much they initially load the machine.
Okay.
And then as they see the transactions, it may be something where, okay, we need to increase this to decrease frequency of visits, or they may set a threshold to say minimal risk, or this is our, our appetite for risk of the amount we'll put in the machine at any one time.
Given the amount...
That's our cash management group that takes care of that with ATM administration.
Given the amount of transactions that was recorded, I think it would be several times a week.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner? If not, Mr. Gagel, I just have one quick question. You mentioned some of the other locations that you've installed these freestanding ATMs. Are those also in strip mall parking lots? Is that basically what you're targeting for?
The location at Nine Mile and Coolidge is in a strip mall.
Okay.
The location at Goddard and Allen is actually in a branch parking lot. When we relocated that branch, we opted, the strategy was to do an interior build-out and put a remote ATM in the parking lot of the leased building.
Okay. All right, I just want to get a feel for where you generally locate these things. All right, good, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll go back to the Commission. Is there any additional questions, or our motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Smiley.
I will make an approving resolution that the request to construct and operate a freestanding drive-up ATM kiosk within the parking lot at, at the Mid-Seven, is that shopping center, is that the correct one?
Correct.
Is, at whatever address that is, is hereby approved, subject to the City Council approval, and the following conditions: that the location of the freestanding drive-up ATM kiosk shall be in accordance to the site plan shown on the plan labeled Test Fit, marked Sheet Number P1 dated October the 18th of 2019, as revised, prepared by Tissio Architects Incorporated; that the enlarged plans and elevations plans marked Sheet P, Number P2 dated October the 18th, 2019, as revised, prepared by Tissio Architects Incorporated, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to; that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals; that unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as a promotional flag, streamers, sponsor vehicles designed to attract attention, passing motors, shall be prohibited; that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this freestanding drive-up ATM kiosk; that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time of application for building permits, and pursuant to Section 19.10 of Ordinance Number 543, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only, from the date of the approval by the City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Do we have support?
Support.
We have a motion to approve by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mrs. McHugh. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
We'll start with Mr. Long.
I would ask the maker and supporter of the motion if we could, and the Planning Director, if we could add something requiring any subsequent user of this to come back to the Planning Commission if there's...
Start over there.
At the end of the lease, if there's a new bank that takes over that wants to, you know, so that we're at least getting a crack at what it's going to look like.
Okay.
Okay, we have nods of approval from our maker and supporter. Mr. Toramina?
That was one of the items I was going to raise, and the standard language we provide is to limit the waiver use to this petitioner only, and any request for a new user would have to be approved by City Council.
Okay, that's fine.
Which is what is typically required. Secondly, if we could consider that they will require waiving two special requirements, one pertaining to the stacking, the number of vehicles, that was mentioned earlier, as well as the principal use of the property, both of which would have to be waived by City Council by a majority vote, supermajority vote, excuse me.
Okay, and our maker of our motion is okay with those?
Yes.
Well, supporter?
Yes.
All right, we have nods of approval and yeses again. Is there any other discussion or comments on the motion? Hearing none, we will go to the Secretary for roll call.
Mrs. Smiley.
Hi.
Mrs. McHugh.
Hi.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura. No.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wolschow?
Votes no. Motion passes. And we did have a request for a waiver of the seven days. Is someone willing to make that requ, that motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mrs. McHugh. Is there any support?
Support.
Support by Mrs. Smiley. Again, I think we'll, well, we'll go on the roll call on the request to waive the seven day.
And we'll, Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
No.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Wolschow?
Votes aye, and that motion passes. So thank you very much, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
And we now go into the miscellaneous item section of our agenda, item number two.
Petition 2017-08-06-09 submitted by Bashir Al-Hady, requesting a one-year extension of all plans in connection with a proposal to construct a gas station at 27430 Seven Mile Road, located on the northwest corner of Seven Mile and Inglewood Roads, in the southeast quarter of Section 1.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Secretary, and Mr. Toramina.
Thank you. Again, this is a one-year extension of a waiver use involving the construction of a gas station on property located at the northwest corner of Seven Mile and Inglewood Roads. Council granted approval for the gas station on October 15th of 2018. Then in February of 2019, the ZBA granted variances involving lot area, building setback, as well as parking. The action of the Zoning Board of Appeals was challenged in Circuit Court by neighboring property owners, and on October 8th of this year, the court affirmed the ZBA's decision granting the variances. However, because of the delay resulting in the court case, the petitioner was unable to secure permits or commence construction prior to the one-year expiration of the site plan. Going back and looking at the plan, fresh everyone's memory, this is a one-story gas station that would measure approximately 2,490 square feet. The interior contains a retail display area, cashier counter, office, as well as a restroom. The exterior is mainly brick, as well as some smooth-faced stone and ephes. There would be a new fueling center that would have four dual-sided pump islands with the capacity to accommodate up to eight vehicles, and an overhead canopy would cover the fuel dispensers. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will note that the only correspondence we received on this item is confirmation from both the City Treasurer, as well as our Finance Department indicating that there are no outstanding balances due for taxes or for general or water and sewer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our Planning Department? Seeing none, our petitioner is here, I believe, this evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, we ask that you start with your name and address.
Sure, Bashir Al-Hadi, 20365 Odette, Dearborn, Michigan.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, is there anything you'd like to add from what you've already heard?
No, as you've said, uh, you know, we, we got held up in the process of submitting, uh, plans to the city and getting them approved. Per the city attorney, they asked us to hold off until everything was worked out in Circuit Court. Once that was all cleared, we submitted our plans. We received notes back from the Planning Department, and we're working with our architect to resolve any issues and make changes according to the, uh, Planning Department.
Thank you, Mr. Al-Hadi. Is there-
Just a point of clarification, if I may.
Yes.
He's referring to the Engineering Department in terms of-
My apologies, yeah, Engineering Department.
Right, right. There's a lot of different departments in the city.
Yep.
That's okay. Uh, do we have any, anyone on the council who has any questions for, uh, our petitioner? Mr. Banjero?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Al-Hadi, how long have you owned the property?
I'm ju- I'm actually a project manager for the property. Um, the property has been owned for quite some time, and, uh, I believe that, 2010? 2010.
Okay, um-
Was the purchase date.
Okay, the reason I ask is I know, um, that property, there was a gas station years ago.
Yes.
And, and I think it's like 2008 or '09, the DEQ flagged it for contamination.
Yes.
And I understand it was a cleanup, but they don't know the results. I was down at the Building Department. Do you have anything on that to state that it was, that the site is clean?
Uh, I don't have exact information. Was that all cleaned up? Can you help me?
Maybe there's some more stuff to be done, but we're, they're gonna do it.
Typically, you do like an environmental study.
Right.
Because if you bought it after '09, you don't know if it's clean. We're assuming it was. I know there was soil taken off.
Yes, and they pulled the tanks out, and they pulled all the-
Yeah, and it's common with gas stations, they'll see there's, there's contamination. That was just some, one concern I had, because they don't know, the Building Department didn't have record that it was, in fact, clean. They're assuming, but they don't know, because that's part of the DEQ requirement.
Right, and so typically, before we, uh, install any tank or, or put anything back in the ground, the DEQ has to give an approval that the proper remediation was done to the property before we install anything new.
Okay, but you're gonna verify, you don't have anything right now showing it does, so, okay.
It's gotta be verified by the DEQ.
Okay.
And, sir, can we just get your name so that we can attribute your comments?
Sam Hamood.
Okay, and your address?
25896 Timber Trail, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Mood.
I have a question.
Any other questions, Mrs. Smiley?
Uh, on Dave's, um, question, uh, Mark, wouldn't they have to, engineering or inspection or somebody have to have that available before they could start doing something on that property?
I don't know if that was one of the comments provided by the engineer, Engineering Department, as part of its initial review of this or not, but I could check on that.
I did, I, I inquired about it, they had no record, and I asked Jerome, because they said it would've been a building issue, and Jerome just stated that they made them fence off. There was soil removed, but he never got any receipt of like a clean slate from the DEQ, which he said would not be uncommon for them, but he, he had no record of it. So to me, I, I feel like it's a concern that we should know that that's been properly cleaned up.
Right.
Because there is under, underground storage, uh, storm retention. You, and I know you're gonna dig up for that, and I don't know if you've taken that into account, but-
Yeah, and I'm-
On-site retention required.
Right, and I'm sure we can get, uh, the proper clarification from the DEQ, showing that it was properly remediated.
Okay, I think I'd like to see that, so, if I can, if I can add that, but.
Okay, Mrs. Smiley, anything else?
No, that, no, that's exactly what I, I wouldn't want him to proceed if it's contaminated, and we're not gonna be able to do that. Thank you, Mr. Banjero, thank you, Chair.
All right, is there any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ventura.
Mr. Al-Hadi, uh, at the study session, we asked you if you had all the drawings and have submitted everything that's required by both the Planning and Engineering Department.
Uh, we submitted, uh, we submitted the plans, the site plans were, if I'm not mistaken, they were already approved, um, but we had to stop, uh, I'm sorry?
We just handed it to the Wayne County for some, uh, we went, came with, when we came to pull the permits.
Mm-hmm.
They said you have to go to the Wayne County and get some approval on plans, so we submitted that to the Wayne County.
Right, yeah, so we submitted plans to the county, as, and, uh, those plans were approved, if I'm not mistaken, and then we were contacted by the city attorney, and they told us to hold off on any further development with the property until they resolved the litigation that they had pending.
All right, I guess my question is, at this point, are all of the drawings done?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and so you're simply awaiting for the approval of all the submissions?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Uh, when do you anticipate you'll break ground?
As soon as we get, uh-
Once we, once we work everything out with the Engineering Department, with the city, and with the county, and, uh-
So that would be as soon as you get a permit?
As soon as we get a permit, and then it probably, if everything went well, I would say I anticipate we'd break ground in the spring of 2020.
We'll have everything on order, the tanks, the pumps, everything.
Now, we've already engaged a general contractor, we've already engaged a fuel supplier for the site, uh, we're just simply, uh, needing a, an extension on the plans that we submitted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our petitioner? No one else? Okay, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for this item, or for or against? We have one person coming forward. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Fellers, and I live at 19304 Rent Cellar, Livonia, Michigan. Um, I submitted some paperwork to the Planning Board, that two petitions that were notarized of people with adjoining property who said they did not, uh, um, they did not know about this. I also have paperwork, their petition, that they asked the people in the area, they had no intention of letting us know it was a gas station, again, the ground had, was contaminated in three areas. I talked to the, uh, guy who went over there to inspect it, when he went there to inspect it, he showed, he showed me three areas that were contaminated. Um, I don't know where the paperwork is on that. He, this, uh, the building, uh, Mr.?
Mr. Toramina.
Trum- Trumini?
Close enough.
All right. He, uh, he has a petition, I mean, affidavit stating that they did not, that we do not want another gas station in that area. For one, those area, the gas station, the property is way too small to put a gas station on that area. You guys waived 5,000 square feet or something for this building site, plus you waived parking areas in the buildings, in the building, and you waived our petition, I mean, our right to have say in this. You also waived the people who live there, you waived our rights also. We don't, we, the people, don't feel that, that, uh, it's right that we were waived. We were, some people say they never received any notice. I have affidavit, two affidavits with a notarized affidavit from the people with the joint propings stating that they never received any information of a gas station being built there. Back in the day when they tore the gas station down, it was a very small little shed, is all it was. It wasn't, it wasn't as great big convenience store, and the gas station, we, the corner of that section, we already have a gas station on their side, 7-Eleven on that side. Today, as today, I was watching the, the truck that delivers stuff to the 7-Eleven, and that parking lot is twice the size of this gas, this property the gas station will be built on, and that they were having a hard time getting in there. Traffic was held up on Seven Mile, trying to get their semi into the parking lot at the 7-Eleven. A gas station that has more than that, than a convenience store gas station, they have at least two to three loads of gas that has to be delivered by a semi every week, every week. They have, um, their vendors who deliver the, the goods to the store also. Our, it is so congested in that corner that people are driving around the block to get away from any, just even the light. So my, corner of my house has become like a traffic, like a Main Street, right on the corner of the property. Value for the people in our area with another gas station built there were bringing my property value down 10%. I feel that it is wrong to have another gas station built there. There's also competition for the little people who, the small business owners in that area. We already have a whole subdivision in that area that is not even, of shopping center that is not even being used since Walmart was built. So to build in another competition, we have five gas stations within one-mile radius of, of this corner, five already in our, in the radius. I understand that, that people want to catch the traffic, but to catch the traffic, we only have one lane. We don't have four lanes of traffic where people can get in and out. I can't even get out of my subdivision. I have to drive five blocks over at a certain time of day just to get out, to go to my church. So, and I work at, I cook for the Salvation Army that is in Farmington right on Inxter Road, so I have to go out Inxter Road to get to where I cook twice a week. I just feel that it's ridiculous that we weren't even asked as, as, as homeowners, if we were, and if this gas station does get built, I, I think I will sell my house in this area. Maybe I'll move to a better area of Livonia, because I do like Livonia, and, um, that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Fells, appreciate your comments. And, Mr. Toramina, when, uh, Mrs. Fells talks about the fact that the requirement for, uh, consent of neighboring properties, uh, was waived, that was done by city councils, is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, the petitioner, um, did not, uh, meet that requirement, uh, and then petitioned council to waive that after, uh, significant debate regarding that issue, that requirement. Uh, at the, uh, in the end, they decided to waive that.
Okay, yeah, yes, okay.
I don't, I have a, their petition that they did bring around to us. This petition does not say anything about a gas station, it just says a family business in the area.
Right.
Doesn't even give the Pacific, uh, Pacific property that they were talking about.
We, we do have a copy of that, so thank you.
You do?
Yes, thank you.
And, and all of that was pointed out to the council, uh, at the time they considered this.
Yes, that was a decision by the City Council. It wasn't our decision, but, but thank you for, for mentioning it.
This isn't City Council?
No, this is the Planning Commission. We just recommend to the City Council, so-
Okay.
This is gonna go through another process at City Council, where you'll have another opportunity to speak as well.
I wish I didn't know that, because I think I'm getting a flu or not. They may anyway.
Well, we'll try not to hold you up too much longer.
Easy.
Uh, is there any other people in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Uh, I don't see anyone else coming forward. The petitioner, is there any other comments that you would like to make?
Yes. I'd just like to point out, I understand the concerns that she has regarding the property and development of it. Um, as I said, we did, we did engage a supplier for the location, we've already engaged a general contractor. Um, most of our sites are 24-hour locations, they're well-lit, um, we typically use the evening shift, uh, we have our CSR's clean and stock the locations, um, and, uh, you know, we, we do intend to abide by all the rules and regulations of the City of Livonia, and we do intend on providing our, the community that we service, a clean and safe location that they can visit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Al-Hadi. Uh, do we have some questions for our petitioner?
Uh, you, on that matter, you said your hours of operation are 24?
Typically.
You also said you'd consider, um, limiting those maybe to like 5:30 to 11:00?
Yes.
We do that?
Yes, I, I only mentioned that we typically use 24, 24-hour locations. Not all of our locations are 24-hours. Some locations do close in the evening.
Great, that would be great, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. McHugh?
Um, we mentioned this last week, but just to clarify, I know she had mentioned on the petition that it stated a family-owned business.
Yes.
It is a family-owned business, is that correct?
Yes.
How many stations do you own around?
Well, Mr. Sam over here, he's going to be the owner, he's planned, intends on running this station with his wife and his son.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for our petitioner, Mr. Long?
That is a, you know, a small site. Will you have any trouble getting the trucks in and out to do refill, refueling?
Our architects, they, we've had much tighter sites that we've had to deal with. Uh, our architects, they typically design locations where the, the pads are located in an easily accessible area, and they also provide big enough tanks so that we're not having to send multiple loads throughout the week. So typically, you'll see one delivery, and that truck won't be seen again for another week.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banjero.
Uh, one question, Ian.
Sure.
And it might not be for the petitioner, might be for Mark. If the hours of operation are from 5:30 AM to 11:00 PM, in the event, they would want to switch to 24-hours, does that have to go through?
That would require an amendment to the waiver use, that would, that would, um, require a public hearing before this body, followed by City Council, um, approval.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Excellent question. Uh, any other questions for the petitioner or for our planning staff? I don't see anything else, so thank you for coming again.
Thank you.
We'll have a motion here soon.
Thank you.
I'll look to the commission, is there a motion on this item? Mr. Ventura.
Offer an approving resolution that the request for a one-year extension of all plans in connection with a proposal to construct a gas station at 27437 Mile Road, subject to City Council approval, and the following conditions. Number one, that the request for a one-year extension of a waiver use approval by Bashir Al-Hadi, and a letter received by the City of Livonia on October 15th, 2019, is hereby approved. Number two, that all conditions imposed by Council Resolution Number 366 dash 18, in connection with a petition Number 2017 dash 08 dash 02 dash 09, which permitted the construction of a gas station at 27437 Mile Road, shall remain in effect to the extent that they are not in conflict with the foregoing condition. Number three, that all conditions imposed by City Council Resolution Number 367 dash 18, and 368 dash 18, which waived the minimum lot size requirement, and the need for at least 65% of the residential neighbors within a 400-foot radius, to approve the proposal shall remain in effect to the extent they are not in conflict with the foregoing condition. Number four, hours of operation shall be limited to the period between 5:30 AM and 11:00 PM, to minimize disturbance to the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, and is there support?
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mrs. McHugh, uh, to recommend approval of the extension. Is there any discussion on that motion? Mrs. Smiley?
That we add, uh, something about, about Mr. Banjero's concern about the, if that's all right with you, about the, the property being properly, uh, evaded or whatever by the DEQ that it's clean to start with.
Yeah, I think provide something that we know-
Certification by the DEQ that the contamination's been remediated.
If that's all right.
And, Mr. Toramina, do you understand that in a way that you can add that to our resolution?
Uh, yes, I do.
Do you have something?
And it could be something that requires ongoing remediation, so, uh, my only concern would be that it has been remediated would imply that, uh, it's received full closure on its current open status, um-
I'd agree with that, that's correct.
Okay.
That's what happens. I like that, you can write that off.
All right, and Mr. Ventura is okay with that?
Yep.
And Mrs. McHugh? All right, is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, the secretary's ready, we'll, um, take a vote on the amended motion.
Mr. Banjero?
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Bongero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye, Chair Wolschow.
Votes aye, motion passes, and this recommendation will go on to city council for their approval. Uh, Mrs. Fells, uh, since you're still in the audience, uh, do keep an eye open there. This will go to city council. You'll have an opportunity to speak there as well. Thank you, and good luck to, to the petitioner on their project.
Thank you.
I did find another house in Livonia.
All right, great. Uh, well, all right, so we'll move on to pending items section of our agenda. Now we have item number three.
Petition two thousand and nineteen dash zero nine dash zero two dash one four, submitted by Arco Construction Company, Inc. Requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section eleven point zero three N one of the city of Livonia zoning ordinance number five four three, as amended to construct and operate a senior assisted living center, Clear Path Assisted Living at three three five seven nine Eight Mile Road, located on the south side of Eight Mile Road between Farmington and Gil Roads on the northwest quarter of section four.
Okay, and, uh, I believe this item was tabled, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we'll need a motion to remove this item from the table.
So moved.
By Mr. Long, supported by.
Smiley.
I.
Go ahead.
We'll go with Mr. Ventura. This is a motion by Mr. Long and Mr. Ventura to remove this item from the table. If there's no objection, we'll show seven to remove this item from the table, and we can go to Mr. Toramina for an update.
So when the planning commission originally, uh, reviewed these plans, uh, the main concern expressed at the time was the uh, design of the building, uh, really, uh, a concern over the amount of, uh, masonry being, uh, applied to the exterior of the building. Uh, the petitioner has submitted revised plans. Uh, this is a rendering showing, uh, the front of the proposed assisted living facility. This is the north elevation, so this is the side of the building that would face towards Eight Mile Road. Uh, brick has been added, uh, to the, to the face of the, of this one-story, uh, building. Uh, it's also been increased along the west elevation of the building, uh, and that's the side facing, uh, the parking lot, which will have considerable exposure, uh, from, from that angle. Uh, not so much the backside, which, uh, borders a wall, as well as the east side, which borders a, uh, a masonry wall. So they've added the brick, uh, really where the building is most visible to the public. They've also added brick, brick around, uh, the, uh, the screen wall for the ground-mounted, uh, equipment, which is at the southwest corner of the, uh, the building. Uh, you had a couple of questions of the petitioner at the study meeting regarding the overall percentage of brick, and I think requested that they bring a material sample board. Uh, they're here, uh, this evening to address those, uh, those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina, and there's no updated correspondence, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, with that, we'll go to the petitioner, who's here? Good evening.
Hello, uh, Jim Eisenhardt, two zero four, uh, Park Road, Webster Rose, Missouri. I'm with Clear Path. Uh, we're back looking for the waiver use. Uh, John here is gonna go through some of the materials, but we were trying to meet your suggestions and add brick around the enclosures and add more to the building.
Excellent, thank you, and your, uh, partner here?
We like brick as much as we do.
Yep, and I'm John Alvol. I'm with Arco Construction. My address is three two three Simmons Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri.
Thank you.
Um, so as you can see, we, uh, we incorporated, as Mark mentioned, uh, third building material, which is that, uh, the brick before you there. And, um, we've added, as Nolan had mentioned in the study session, eighty-eight percent more masonry on the north elevation, forty-four percent on the west elevation, which brings our total across the whole building at fifty-fifty. So we're actually fifty percent masonry, fifty percent hardy siding.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that update. Uh, do we have any questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I have a comment. Um, we appreciate your willingness to work with the commission. Um, you know, the, and that area that most of the other buildings are brick, and I think this, what you, the upgrades you've done will fit into that area much better. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Is there any other questions or comments?
Just one question, Mr. Chair. Just, uh, out of curiosity, what is, um, the facility rent for, like a studio in a one-bedroom?
Uh, and it, uh, we have different levels of service, but a, a studio will start around, uh, thirty-nine hundred to four thousand dollars per month. And it'll go up to memory care, which is our most expensive, which is around fifty-five hundred to fifty-nine hundred a month.
What is, uh, like, what's the occupancy percentage? Like, how, are your buildings full or?
So we have nine facilities that are mirrored after this building, and our average occupancy, occupancy is ninety-three percent.
Ninety-three.
Right now. So we have several that are at a hundred percent, and we have one that is, um, been open for less than a year. And it's still, um, it's hovering around eighty-eight percent. So they, they do get above, ninety-three percent in senior housing is considered, uh, to be full because of the turnover, but we do get above ninety-three too. But our average is ninety-three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bongero. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions. There's no one else in the audience to speak to this item. So, uh, last word goes to our petitioner. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we make our decision?
We just appreciate all the comments and we're looking forward to being in Livonia, hopefully.
Very good, thank you, sir. Uh, with that, we'll go to our commission. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to construct and operate a senior assisted living facility, Clear Path Assisted Living at three three five seven nine Eight Mile Road, is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the site layout as shown on the paving and grading plan identified as sheet number C three dated September eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, prepared by NOAC and Frost Engineers, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the declaration of easements verifying the subject property shares parking and access with the abutting shopping center site be supplied to the inspection department at the time a building permit is applied for. Number three, that the landscaping plan identified as sheet number L one dated September eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, prepared by NOAC and Frost Engineers, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four, that all disturbed lawn areas shall be sodded in lieu of hydro seeding. Number five, that underground sprinklers are to be provided for all landscaped and sodded areas, and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number six, that the exterior elevations plan, prepared by GMA Architects, as received by the planning commission on November eighth, two thousand and nineteen, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number seven, that this site shall meet either the city of Livonia or the Wayne County Stormwater Management Ordinance, whichever applies, and shall secure any required permits, including stormwater management permits, wetlands permits, and soil erosion and sedimentation control permits from Wayne County, the city of Livonia, and/or the state of Michigan. That the petitioner shall correct to the fire department's satisfaction, this is number eight, that, that the stipulations contained in the correspondence dated October eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Number nine, that all light fixtures shall not exceed twenty feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize any stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number ten, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall contain brick or a brick face that matches the brick on the building. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. The trash dumpster area shall always be maintained and when not in use, closed. Number eleven, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number twelve, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number thirteen, pursuant to section nineteen point one zero of ordinance number five four three, the zoning ordinance of the city of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by city council. And unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Bongero. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, if the secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Bongero?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye, Chair Wolschow.
Votes aye, motion passes. We'll go on to city council with an approving recommendation. Wish you luck on your project. Thank you for coming tonight. Don't forget your material samples, of course. Thank you for bringing those, those are always very helpful.
Council, council will really like those too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can leave them.
Leave them here.
If you want to, yes. I'll take care of it. If you're flying with them, I understand, it's just.
Just opened up a lot of space.
He's gotta pay some serious luggage fees.
Going through TSA with some bricks isn't the safest thing to do. All right, we do have one other.
Hoping that wasn't the carry-on.
Good night.
Good night.
We do have one other item on our agenda, that's the, uh, minutes.
And the approval of the minutes of the one thousand one hundred and fiftieth public hearing, a regular meeting held on October twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen.
I almost stole your thunder and sent it for you.
Yeah, I bet it.
Is there, uh, a, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Long, support?
Support.
Mrs. Smiley, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. Smiley. If there's no objection, I think we can show seven on that, and that makes us batting a thousand on approvals tonight. Uh, that takes us to the end of our meeting. Is there any other business to come before us? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm a little adjourned.
Yes.
Yes, yes. I think that's support.
Can you do both?
We have a motion by Mr. Karen Magna, supported by Mr. Karen Magna, no, well, supported by Mrs. Smiley, uh, to adjourn. If there's no objection, again, we'll safely show seven on that, and that takes us to the end of our meeting tonight. Uh, of course, I wanna thank Livonia Television staff for their contribution to our meeting. And with no further business, uh, we will adjourn the meeting tonight at eight o'clock PM. Good night, Livonia.
Okay. Sounds good.